And we'll call the meeting to order. Our next public hearing is subdivision 2022-10, Rayleigh Farm.
This is a cluster subdivision to divide 358.84 acres plus or minus into 646 single-family lots to be located on a certain parcel of land lying and being in Indian River 100 Sussex County. The properties are lying on the south side of Avalon Road, which is Route 302A, and the north side of Zor Road, which is Sussex County Route 48, approximately .28 mile east of Gravel Hill Road, which is Sussex County Route 30. The 911 address is 26433 Zor Road, 24358, 24268, and 24272 Lawson Road Georgetown. The tax parcel ID is District 234, MAP 15, Parcels 3.20, 3.21, 9.00, 10.00, 11.01, 13.00, 14.00, and 15.00. The zoning district is AR1 Agricultural Residential District. And submitted into the record, Mr. Chairman, we have a copy of the applicant's preliminary subdivision plan, we have a copy of the applicant's exhibit booklet and presentation, we have a copy of the plus comments and the applicant's response to the plus comments, we have a copy of the applicant's environmental assessment and public facility evaluation report, we have a copy of the applicant's Chapter 99-9C letter in response, we have a copy of the DELL dot TIS response letter, we also have a copy of a letter from Delaware Electric Co-op relating to the ability to serve, we also have a copy of the staff analysis. In addition, we have the technical advisory committee comments, including a letter from the Sussex County Engineering Department Utility Planning Division, a letter from Denrec Division of Watershed Stewardship, we have a copy of the Delaware, a letter from Delaware Electric Co-op, a letter from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and a letter from the Delaware State Fire Marshal. I would note, in total, we received 35 comments, and those comments that have been received today have now been scanned and uploaded to our electronic document management system. Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Horner. I'm here, I'm a Delaware attorney. I have my bar card if you would like to see it, Mr. Wheatley. I am here on behalf of the owner, Sussex Land Holdings LLC, and the developer, DE Land Devco LLC. Also with me today is Jamie Sekler, a licensed professional engineer with Davis Bowen and Fidel. The applicant has submitted an exhibit booklet for your review that has been before you for at least 10 days. Additionally, just before this, I handed up some proposed conditions of approval for your review as well. I intend to provide a brief overview of the project, discuss the project's compliance with the AR1 Cluster Subdivision Ordinance, as well as Sections 125 ENF and 99C requirements, and the plan's consistency and conformity with the comprehensive plan. This project is known as Rayleigh Farm, is a proposal to divide 358, give or take, acres of land into 646 single-family dwelling lots as a cluster subdivision in the AR1 zoning district. A portion of the site currently estimated to be about 163 acres, give or take, or 45.42% of the site will be open space, subject to final engineering and agency approvals.
What was the acreage again?
It was 162.998, to be specific. And that's on the datum table of the plan as well. Which is 45.42% of the site will be open space. The project is located on the north side of Zor Road, the west side of Lawson Road, and the south side of Avalon Road, on the parcel numbers that were recited by Director Whitehouse. Currently, the property is a vacant use, an agricultural use, there's some residual farming structures that would be removed if this plan were to go through. And if approved, again, it will be 646 single-family dwelling lots, which is a density of 1.8 units per acre. They are one zoning permits, two units for the eight per acre, which would allow for 717 units on the property, and this proposed use is below density, as again, it's 646 units. This proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other neighboring uses, which are primarily residential in nature and agricultural, and there are other residential planned communities in the nearby and adjacent areas, including Liberty, Weatherby, Independence, Avalon Woods, and Pine Lake, to name a few. The proposed cluster subdivision is superior in design to a standard subdivision, and I'll highlight specifically its compliance with those shortly. The project proposes significant amounts of open space, landscape buffers to protect environmentally sensitive areas on site, including mature forests, and a stormwater management system that will act as an amenity and natural companion to the natural features on site. In reviewing the public comments in advance of this hearing, many of the public comments centered on concerns related to the removal of mature trees, as well as traffic, so I want to touch on those points before I get specifically into the compliance with 11525 and with 999C. On the slide, let me see, so we go right here. So on this slide before you is an aerial from June of 2015. This is prior to my client having any involvement in the property, and you can see that in 2015, the property was heavily logged as a result of the prior owners of the property, much of their business, my understanding, is centered around the use of the property as a borrow pit, as well as some lumbering and timbering operations for the use of the wood. So in 2015, this site was almost entirely cleared, as you'll see, the only areas of mature trees still remaining are located in this area right here, and then a couple little paths right here, for the most part. Consistent with that, you'll see also in the submissions, the original plan that went through plus review included 701 proposed units, which included units in this area of mature forests. You know, in compliance with the intent of the cluster ordinance, when my client went out and walked the site and further reviewed the site and evaluated the different trees that were out there, and the size, the caliber of the trees, the age of the trees, sort of the strength of the forest, this area was identified as sort of the most environmentally sensitive feature on the property. There are no wetlands, state or regulated, state or federal regulated wetlands on the property. So with that in mind, the plan was revised at a cost of almost 50 units reduction in density, and the sole reason for that was to preserve that primary feature on the site that is the environmentally sensitive area. So when, you know, to the extent there are concerns about the cutting of mature trees, I would say that, consistent with the intent of the Cluster Subdivision Ordinance, removal of mature trees is extremely limited on this site, as again, this is, this is the one area, and then this small patch right here would need to be removed for the entrance, but the large contiguous tract that would allow for use by the residents is in fact being preserved. One other concern that I'll touch on is, is traffic, as that is always a hot button issue for everybody, and you know, particularly in this area, many of the public comments focused on that and the rural nature of the roads. One of the reasons for this particular proposed use being done as a senior 55-plus age-restricted community was with traffic count in mind. By right, at 717 units with a non-age-restricted unit, you would be looking at 6,180 daily trips. With the proposed use, again, being below density and being age-restricted, it comes down to 2,893 daily trips, which is a reduction of almost 3,300 daily trips. So, and Mr. Sekler is going to speak in detail about the planned, the sort of improvements that DELL dot will require in connection with this project that will greatly improve the roads and the serviceability in that area, but certainly credence and thought was given to this plan in order to sort of minimize the impact on the roads that are there, rather than just maxing out the density with a non-age-restricted community, which would impact much greater than this proposed use. So with that in mind, I'm going to touch on the compliance with the code. The project complies with the Sussex County Code, Section 1 Fight 11519, and the comprehensive plan by proposing a low-density, single-family residential development. Specifically, Code Section 11520 of AR1 permits single-family detached homes on individual lots. All community signs will conform with the Code Section 15159.2. Again, the parcel is located in the AR1 district, which has a minimum lot area of 7,500 square feet. All proposed structures will comply with the height, area, and bulk requirements. Let's see, I'll go back to the main plan. It's here, sorry. Will comply with the height, area, and bulk requirements of Sussex County Code, Section 11525, for cluster subdivisions with central sewer. This project proposes lots that, subject to final engineering, all have a minimum of 7,500 square feet, a maximum of 27,994 square feet, and an average lot size of 10,175 square feet. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the comprehensive plan concerning future land use, which permits development of single-family homes, and encourages a clustering option provided that significant, permanent, common, open space is preserved, and the development is connected to central water and sewer. Again, we're proposing 45.42% open space, subject to final engineering, and there will be central water and sewer provided by Artesian. Chapter 11525E, the design requirements. This project complies with those design requirements of the AR1 district, for the reasons that are stated in the prepared materials by Davis Bowen and Fidel, which have been submitted into the public record. I won't highlight everything in that for the purposes of brevity, but I want to note some of the following items. The proposed cluster development complies with the community design section of the comprehensive plan. Housing types are limited to single-family detached dwellings. A forested buffer area with a minimum width of 30 feet is provided around the entirety of the property. The plan was supplemented recently, there was a, an engineering sort of error on the buffer that showed 20 feet in certain spots, there was always 30 feet space, and the new updated plan shows that 30 feet, and certainly, you'll notice in the proffered conditions, the 30-foot buffer is there, and obviously intended to be complied with. No proposed lots have direct access to statement to maintain roads as required by code. All lots are configured outside of regulated wetlands, as again, there are no state or federal regulated wetlands on the site at all, and Artesian will provide central water The project complies with 11525F for a cluster subdivision. This section requires homes to be clustered on environmentally suitable portions of the tract. There's been a lot of discussion lately about superior design requirements contained in that section. On the displayed slide, you will see the exact language in the code, and I've highlighted language related to superior design, which requires the design to be superior in the reasonable judgment of the planning commission to that which would be allowed under the regulations for the standard option. So often, superior design gets sort of tossed about as a way to hold two cluster subdivisions next to each other, and this nebulous idea of, hey, is this one superior, is this one superior, and there's not sort of a standard that is really, when, when people oppose projects, they just say this kind of nebulous term, is this superior design, is this not? And so, when you look at the code, and it's looking specifically at what a non-cluster AR1 subdivision would require, and what I would say is, if you want to know what that would look like, I think this is probably a decent starting point to look at, except there would be absolutely no buffers on the exterior, the lot sizes would be larger, and any of the open spaces and amenities would not be required in a non-cluster subdivision. So when you, when you look at, is this design superior, I would certainly say, you know, we're preserving large tracts of open space, including the environmentally sensitive features. The pond will be used as an active open amenity for the community with kayaking and fishing uses intended, and when you compare that to a standard AR1 subdivision, which does not have the requirements of the buffering, of the preservation of environmental features, it's certainly clear that this is, in fact, superior in design. With that in mind, I'm going to touch specifically on the elements of superior design that are in the code, just to highlight those items. Homes shall be clustered on the environmentally suitable portions of the tract. Here, again, we have no regulated wetlands, so the mature woodlands are what I've identified on that prior slide, and as you can see, the homes are clustered away from those sensitive environmental features. This is a little bit of a longer one. The requirement, open space meet the official definition of open space contained in 1154, and it does that. The open space is beneficial to the residents, it's congregated in large open areas at the front of the property, including the large existing pond, which again, is intended for kayaking and fishing. There are very few fragmented open spaces, if you, I'll go back to the plan, and then if you go back to the plan, you'll be able to see that really, the, the primary tracts of open space are the large area at the front where the pond is, as well as the large forested, mature forested area, which is intended to act as an amenity for the community, sort of as a, a community park, usable by the residents and the neighbors, living, well, not the neighbors, the residents of the community, I apologize. You know, specifically, the open space requirement is 30%, we're proposing over 45% open space, and the code requires that 30% of that open space be on one contiguous tract, as defined in the code. And we have just under 50% of the required open space being contiguous based on the code definition. Again, the code also requires a pedestrian trail system, and that is being provided for in the plan, as well as sidewalks on one side of the road. Let's see. The plan complies with 115193E, which is again, wetlands buffers, and we don't have any wetlands on site. Stormwater management will be done on site in compliance with State of Delaware regulations. Storm waters will be privately maintained until the developer, by the developer, until HOA takes over, and stormwater management and storm drainage will be in accordance with conservation districts and engineering requirements from Sussex County. Again, removal of healthy mature trees shall be limited, I won't beat that point any further, and scenic views being preserved. The project does so, it limits back-to-back lots and provides gaps between lots, and again, it's preserving the mature woods for the scenic views associated with that, and also preserving the existing pond for, again, the scenic views associated with that. And then the last item here is the process for development that you need to show with respect to superior design, which, as I've highlighted before, we, we identified the lands that should be preserved by identifying those mature trees, we then designed around that, identified the developable areas, located the roads, and then the lots, so the plan is consistent with the design requirements of the cluster subdivision ordinance. And then just the last little one is, there are sidewalks. So that is all the items related to the cluster subdivision ordinance and the superior design, and I just wanted to specifically highlight those, because there's been a lot of discussion lately about what is and what is not superior design. I'm going to touch next, just on Chapter 999C of the code, very briefly. Again, the applicant's submissions sort of show compliance in great detail, and I'm just going to highlight a few items. The plan integrates the proposed subdivision into existing terrain and surrounding landscape. Again, there's a 30-foot landscape buffer proposed to provide for that. There's no wetlands on the property, and none of the property is in the 100-year floodplain. There are no known historic preservation sites, and there's minimal impact on natural features. Plan preserves, preserves large tracts of open space and preserves scenic views, as previously mentioned. Minimization of tree removal and vegetation and soil removal and grade changes, disturbance on the site is going to be minimized to what is required to develop the property, and once again, the mature trees are being saved. Screening of objectional features from neighboring properties and roadways will be provided by the required buffer. Water and wastewater will be provided by Artesian. Runoff will be directed via the closed road section of storm drain network into a stormwater management system consisting of best management practices for stormwater treatment and discharge in accordance with State of Delaware and Sussex Conservation District standards to prevent surface and groundwater pollution. Post-development runoff will receive better treatment than during pre-development conditions, for reasons that are discussed by the engineering team, to the extent there are questions about that. The proposed development is planned in a way to minimize erosion and sedimentation changes in groundwater levels, increase rates of runoff potential for flooding and design. And again, the system will be adequately sized to treat, collect and treat the runoff and be in compliance with code. Is anticipated the proposed community will cause current property values to remain the same and not increase values of the other properties in the areas. Community is not expected to have an adverse effect on the schools, I would often get killed for saying that, but I will say here, with a 55-plus community, that's absolutely applicable, as these are not the, the types of residents that typically have school-aged children. If anything, it would have a positive impact due to the tax base increasing with a lack of, of similar corresponding young students. The large amount of open space provides for active and passive uses for the community residents, which makes the open space consistent with Chapter 6 of the comprehensive plan. There are two access points proposed on Lawson and Avalon Road. Jamie Sekler from, from Davis Bowen and Fidel is going to speak in just a moment about the proposed traffic improvements that will be done in connection with this project. And again, the project is compatible with other nearby land uses, and as previously discussed, the stormwater management system will act as an amenity with the system. And again, just to wrap things up, the plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and its use. So if there are no further questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sekler to talk about some of the traffic improvements that are proposed.
Good afternoon, Jamie Sekler, Davis Bowen and Fidel, again. Just like to say, we met with DELL dot, and we conducted a TIS, a traffic impact study, to study the areas, roadways around this proposed subdivision, and with that, we're required to upgrade Lawson Avenue and Zor Roads to local standards with adding shoulder and widening the, the lane widths along our frontage, as well as obviously our left and right turn lanes for the entrance on Lawson and Avalon Road. Also on Lawson, they will be repaving and doing road widening for the entire length from Zor to Avalon, and then probably as many of the residents sitting behind me know, the intersection of Zor, Hollyville, and Harmon Hills is a weird intersection in itself. Part of their improvements are to add turning movements or extra turn lanes at that intersection to provide a better, safer way to navigate kind of a tricky intersection that exists today. And as Mr. Horner already mentioned, you know, when we did the TIS as part of the superior design, you know, a by-right subdivision was roughly 6,200 trips per day, and based on age-restricted and reducing by almost 80 homes, it's around 2,900, so it's about 3,100 trips per day, less than what is by-right here on the site. And to further elaborate on that, like weekday peak hours in the morning, by-right's around 450, and it's 160, the way it sits today for trips, so that's about 300 less trips for, for the peak movements in the morning and evening. So, and with that, I'm sure there'll be some questions on traffic coming up, but, is there anything else?
Right, does that conclude your presentation for the moment?
That concludes our presentation, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll see if anyone on the commission has any questions for you, and we'll start with Ms. Wingate.
We answered some of my questions I had. So probably for the engineer, please, is there any opportunity to tie the sewer into the inland bays? Is that too far? It's only a couple miles away, isn't it? I'm thinking about the neighbors, if there was an opportunity for them to have central sewer, if you did something like that.
The inland bays as far as where?
For the, the county.
Yeah, I believe we spoke with Hans, and I'm pretty sure it's Artesian's area, so Artesian will be serving water and sewer.
But it'll all be on-site, there won't be anything, you're having a pump station on-site?
There will be a pump station, but it ties into a central, Artesian central system. There's not on-site sewer water, they're all public services.
So it's going to be a force main connected into this county system?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I would think the neighbors would be happy if some of the debris could be moved, because I was all over that site, it's got some beautiful ponds in it, and I'm really glad to see the design to save the trees, because there are some really pretty trees in that specific area, huge. There's a lot of junk on that site, including an old boat and some trailers. So I think that's, that's all I have for right now, I may have more later. Thank you.
Commissions?
I sort of want to reiterate a couple points. So the applicant redid the design to save the environmentally impacted area and what trees were left on the property after the logging?
That's correct. So the logging happened, the logging sort of predated any involvement in it, and when we went and we evaluated the site, and we said, hey, we need to figure out what are the most sort of valuable environmental resources here, and the areas that had been logged recently, when they were evaluated, they were essentially a lot less mature, given that they've been cut recently, and so we looked, and we found the areas that were the most mature and environmentally sensitive, and then clustered away from that.
Great. So the reduction cut the, the estimated vehicle trips in half too, correct?
Uh, that was mostly made, done by the age restriction. The reduction in density certainly did have an impact, again, 717 is the maximum permitted density, and we're at 646, right? 646, so there is, it's, it's below density, but even from the plus plan, and you know, oftentimes, what is permitted by density doesn't always fit on the site.
Exactly.
But what was, what you see on that plus plan was 717, no, 717, 701 on the, on the plus plan, so it was mapped with 701 lots that would fit, and then in an effort to preserve that area, there was a loss of, you know, over 50 lots.
That's a point I sort of wanted to stress, so thank you. That's all I have.
Scott?
Yeah, just a few questions. So what percentage of the land that's being preserved that's not being developed into lots happens to be the stormwater ponds and the, the existing water? I know, you know, it looks like, when you look at the numbers, you're preserving a lot, but you're, you're probably preserving things you, either you have to have these spaces for the stormwater management, or in the case of an existing body of water, it has to remain.
So the existing body of water, being the, the borrow pit there, it's not required to remain, by code, a borrow pit can be filled in, there's a process for that. Ultimately, we viewed it as, as an open space that can serve as an amenity, and in fact, and Mr. Sekler can speak more to this, the existing borrow pit-based pond oftentimes can't be used for stormwater management. Essentially, SCD has requirements on the grade, the slope of grade shelving and things like that, so certainly that large pond area, which, you know, frankly, if you, if you see that pond, it's a very beautiful, large pond that will really serve as an amenity, you know, cleaning up the edges and things like that. So that is open space that, you know, could have been filled in, would have been cost-effective to do so, would have been something we would have considered, no. But that's, I would say, that's the, the point of the, of the cluster ordinance, is to identify those sort of beautiful scenic, environmentally sensitive features, and then cluster away from them.
Thank you. There were a lot of comments about how much forest land you're clearing in order to develop the site, and you know, clearly, there's a lot of people who are concerned about preserving as much woodland as we can in the county. Your description of the site indicates that it was clear-cut, how long ago was that again?
That, the aerial that was provided is from 2015.
2015, okay, so that's, that's regrown pretty substantially, I would think, by now, right? Unfortunately, I didn't make it to the site.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't say substantial, I mean, when you compare it to the mature trees over there, which are massive, I would say, I mean, I don't want to balk, maybe the tallest tree in that area is 15 feet, 20 feet?
In the regrowth?
In the regrowth area?
Probably 20.
Yeah, and, and pretty small, so I mean, it's certainly regrown some, but if, if you talk to foresters, and even when you heard recent comments from, you know, Department of Agriculture and other projects, not all forests are created equal, is sort of the common term that they say, and that's here. I mean, ultimately, when we look at the site and how the entire wooded nature of it, and again, in the cluster subdivision ordinance, it specifically says that this won't prevent the development of wooded parcels, that's a line in, in the code. So we felt that the best way to address the preservation of trees, which frankly, you don't very see, see very often when an applicant reduces their density in an effort to preserve mature trees, and that's why, you know, very comfortable here, coming here and saying, this is in fact superior design, given that, that did in fact happen. Oftentimes, you know, you can make a case for preservation that, that wouldn't necessarily have been required by the code and, and existing precedent.
There's a couple of different ponds on there.
Yeah, correct.
All right. Thank you.
Cleared.
No further questions.
So it's clear-cut in 2015, obviously. Was it reestablished in ponds, or is it just natural growth, like maples and?
Just a couple of the, sorry. I'm not going to lie, I'm not a, a tree person, so, or landscaper, I don't know, it doesn't look like it was really replanted. A lot of the ones, like for forestry, you can see that they're physically re-replanted, and like, they're more in rows, et cetera, for logging. I don't believe, they might, someone might have, a forester, maybe.
Yeah, my, my lay opinion would be that it was just natural regrowth, I have an area next to me that's naturally regrowing, and it looks fairly similar.
But going out there and walking it today, it's kind of like the brushy undergrowth, it's almost next to impossible to walk through, is what's kind of the way there now.
If it wasn't replanted, it's usually what you get.
Yeah.
And I see you're trying to help the people with traffic, two entrances, two entrance exits, two of them.
Right.
And you're going to widen raids, so that's a plus.
All right, staff, anyone?
None for me, thank you.
Okay, counselor?
Just a couple, the two entrances, so they're both fully DELL dot entrances, as we've had that question come up lately, you know, emergency versus full entrances.
They're, they're full entrances, correct.
The other thing is, you know, you, you've talked about, my microphone wasn't on, you talked a lot about the age restrictions, because it won't impact the schools and the traffic counts. The proposed conditions didn't talk about it being age-restricted.
We, we would certainly proffer that, that condition for it to be age-restricted.
Because obviously, that, you know, if it wasn't in it, then it got converted to, that's, that's a totally different project with different circumstances, so, all right.
Yeah, we would certainly proffer that condition.
And on the sewer, just so we're clear on that, it's Artesian, but it's being force main pumped to, to the county, I'm just not sure there's any Artesian wastewater treatment plant that's around there. It's, not that it's here and there, just more, just so it's in the record how it's been handled.
Yes, that, that's correct.
Okay, okay, all right. That's all the questions I have.
It's staying into the county system.
Right.
Thanks, Mr. Wheatley.
All right, sir. Thank you. If you'll take a seat nearby, we'll see if there's anyone here that has an interest in your application. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of subdivision 2022-10, Rayleigh Farm? Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? like to speak in opposition to subdivision twenty-twenty-two dash ten? All right. Whoever gets here first, okay?
Uh, hi, my name is.
You'll be next.
My name's Kenny Archer. I live at twenty-two Snow Road. I live, I live right next to where this development's gonna be built. And when I look around me, I see the people that are here. Most of these people are elderly people and we're all, we're all gonna be on fixed incomes sooner or later. When you start putting your housing development in, you're gonna raise the price of property value. Therefore, you're actually taking the people that were born and raised here and you're shoving us off to the side because there's gonna be a reassessment next year, the way I understand it. And at the same time, see, we people that were born and raised here, the money was never here. All these people that are coming in from somewheres else, they come from, their garbage bill is our property taxes. But at the same time, when you look at what we make down here compared to what the economy or the, the money that the people that are coming here are bringing, they're just taking, making us go away. When you go to a local, local, uh, group of people that you grew up with and the question is, where are you gonna move to? Well, what do you mean? Oh, well, such and such has built a development behind me. I don't want that. And all I see is fifty-track housing everywhere I go. And all they do is they just go and just destroy everything. You're ripping the heritage right away from us and you're throwing it right on the ground and you're spitting, spitting right in our faces. And I don't like it. And at the same time, there's nothing I can do and I know you're all gonna approve of it, but as somebody who was born and raised here, am I against it? Yes, I am. Sorry, fellas. Have a good day.
All right, sir. Thank you. All right. You're next. No, whoa, 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 whoa. Ladies and gentlemen, you were specifically told and instructed, and I know we took a break since then, so maybe you forgot, okay? We don't do applause. We don't, you know, this is not a clown show. This is a public proceeding, so there'll be no applause, no comments while other people are speaking. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah. My name is Robert Haug. I live on Avalon Road. Uh, I was just wondering, the traffic and everything, and yes, I am a transplant from Newcastle. Uh, but I've grown to like my neighbors and everybody in that neighborhood is fine. Uh, and, you know, it's, the school districts are failing. The, the roads are failing. I don't think we have the infrastructure to put that many houses on that small of a lot, like a half acre perhaps. Uh, we've got Liberty going in down the road from there, uh, another housing development. And it sounds like they're trying to combine all four properties into one. As the sign out front is three-hundred and some acres, then there's two other acres, three other places on it, on the list of , uh, Lawson Road addresses. Uh, they're trying to shove it all into one. And I believe the creek that runs behind Avalon Road on the west side is a, uh, wetland there. So that's all I'd wanna say and just try to make sure that it goes in right.
All right, sir.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Who's next? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Susan Leon. I live on Avalon Road as well. Um, I have a few questions. I wrote them down. Give me just a minute. I'm very concerned about the traffic entrance that you have proposed on Avalon Road. That's a tertiary road. It's, uh, tar and chip, which I only heard of when I moved down here. Um, a very narrow road. When you have Lawson and Zoor, why are you dumping half the traffic out on a skinny little road? One of my concerns. Um, one of the things that looks like a preserved area of greenery is really the power lines. They have no choice but to leave that green. Um, I think that they can kind of make amends somewhere else and give us a little bit more green. I'm concerned that there's not going to be a buffer on Avalon Road between the development and the road to give the residents who have been there for years and years, some sort of, of remedy from the noise and the light and the sound that will be in this development. I'm concerned that, um, when I had looked up that property for sale, it said that there were toxic areas on it, for instance, tire dumping, uh, some sort of toxic waste, a problem with the pond and the water. I'd like to know if that's been remediated? Who has done it and has it been done properly? Um, I'm concerned about all of the different poisons that are going to be in my aquifer. You now have six-hundred-plus homes drawing from the same water. That is a big concern. Water down here, our homes are roughly several acres, each one going down the road. Now you've got six-hundred houses on, on a little piece of property. Water's gotta be coming from somewhere. I'm concerned that it's gonna drain it.
Well, it's gonna be a central water system, ma'am, so it's not gonna be individual wells. It'll, it'll be a central water system coming from.
But the water's still coming from somewhere.
I guess, but anyway.
Um, let's see. Just real quickly, let me go over, oh, police fire in emergency. They're already strained. What are you gonna do with another, well, two people in the house, six-hundred, forty, so what, thirteen-hundred people are going to have to be drawing on that. And if anybody here has ever driven through Millsboro, because that's where everyone will shop, because it's the closest place, you may as well bring lunch because it's gonna take you that long to get through the town if we don't fix the infrastructure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, just wanna pause for a second. The, um, the lady mentioned the, the presence of what she referred to as toxic materials. Do you wanna address that?
Absolutely. So we had a, a phase one environmental site assessment done on the property and it showed as what are called R E Cs, recognized environmental conditions. It showed the presence of tires, uh, on the site, which has been removed and remediated. And the only others or, you know, quote, rec were the, uh, the presence of the chicken houses, um, and historical agricultural uses, which we're actually currently undergoing a phase two environmental site assessment. All of that will of course be remediated at appropriate levels, um, you know, prior to any sort of development on the project. It's not anticipated though, that we have sort of any environmental concerns with that. Um, they just sort of with any sort of, uh, existing agricultural use or historical agricultural use, they always identify that as a potential risk due to, you know, obviously the chemicals and the, the runoff from the animals.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Okay, who's next? Yes, sir. Yeah.
My name's Steve Friend. I live on Avalon Road and my main issue is with the road, you know, before they tarred and chipped that road, it was just a dirt road. That, that was Avalon Road. Then they tarred and chipped it. This past spring, Del Dot has probably spent five-hundred to six-hundred, maybe even more than that, on tar and chipping that road. They come and tar, they tarred it, they chipped it, they come back with some glue, then they chipped, uh, chipped it again. And I mean, that road ain't gonna handle all that traffic. I'm not against a development. I'm, I'm for, I was born and raised in Lewis. I'm a native from here. But it's just where I got shoved out of Lewis and I thought I found a place that I, I'm seventy-two years old, so I thought, well, I finally found a place where I can finally. It took every eight to ten minutes before we'd ever see a car. Now we see them every three or four minutes. That's how much the traffic has picked up. It's, it's where you, infrastructure's gotta be done first before you can do this kind of, when you, you put that six-hundred and seven-hundred houses in there, just think two cars to every house, average. That's fourteen-hundred vehicles. You're gonna put half on Lawson or out on, uh, Zoor Road and then the other half on Avalon? It can't handle it. And then I'll guarantee you, Del Dot will go ahead and at the Lawson and Avalon, they'll put a turnabout, okay? Then they'll go down the other end and put another turnabout and it's just, we need to stop all this stuff. I'm, I'm telling you, we need to think things through before we go in and make these decisions. And I'm not against these guys building it, you know? People's gotta move here from somewhere because population is going up, but we have to do it right. That's all I ask. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. I do wanna ask, uh, Mr. Sekler, if you would, um, in your discussions with the Department of Transportation and these, where are you in all that? I mean, are these entrance locations, locations that you've proffered to Del Dot and you're waiting to hear from them? Or is this where Del Dot wants these to be? And have they discussed about your, your responsibility for road improvements? Where are we in all that?
Yes, so we, like I said, we had conducted the T I S and we also have had a pre-submital meeting to discuss. Um, you know, they'd like to take entrances off the lower classification roads. So Zoor Road is the higher classification, which is why the two entrances are on Lawson and Avenue, or Lawson and Avalon, sorry about that. Um, and yeah, the, the turn lanes, et cetera, and pretty much the locations on this plan have been pretty well thought out and discussed multiple times with Del Dot.
Are they requiring you to upgrade Avalon Road to any degree?
Avalon Road, um, yeah. Our entire frontage, we are upgrading, uh, the road with, with widening, uh, with shoulder widening, et cetera. And then Lawson Road, we are adding shoulders across the frontage and also, and like I said earlier, we're improving, uh, Lawson from Zoor to Avalon, the entire length.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, who's next? I think you, sir, with your left hand and ear and the blue shirt.
Good afternoon. My name is Ed Givens and, um, I live on Route Thirty. And at one time, my grandfather, he owned from Zoor Estates all the way down to Deep Branch. And, um, I own this piece of pines right here. There's thirty-thousand Lablalle Pines in here. And my biggest concern is the drainage. In my life's short lifetime, I've seen this five-acre field completely underneath water, two feet deep. And as you can see, Zoor Estates, they have a stormwater pond that's at least five acres. I've seen it completely filled up and overflow into this section of, of Lablalle Pines that I have that are currently thirty-two years old. I'd hate to lose all of that income with this development being developed and with the houses being developed, they're gonna raise those lots up and I feel that water is gonna run off there and eventually flood this area here, this area, all along through this border here of that, uh, butts up next to me. There are, currently, there's a ditch that runs across through the Raleigh Farm, Raleigh Farm. Um, what's gonna happen to that ditch that's on the property now?
Uh, no, no, you talk to me. I'll, I'll talk to them when it's time. You go ahead. I'll, I'll address your concern.
Like I, I'm, with all the development, it's gonna be in there and no stormwater on the existing development, where's all that water gonna, gonna go? Like I said, just in my lifetime, I've seen this five-acre field completely underneath water. And I've also seen, there's a ten-acre field up here completely underneath water. I've seen it twice. My grandfather saw it one other time, so three times.
Where's the water coming from that's going on your land? Is there a ditch that's next to it or something?
Hmm, well, there's a ditch in the back, but when there's a heavy rain, say a half-century rain, it stands there. And I know the water table on this farm, I mean, six feet, you got water. I got a picture top pump in my front yard, drove it by hand. And I live right over here. By this, um, property here, I had it cut off in nineteen-ninety-two. And there's a, it's a nice standing piece of pines. I'd hate to see it get flooded. Thank you.
All right, sir. Mr. Sekler, you wanna come up and talk to us about stormwater and what the, what the pre-development conditions are and what the post-development conditions you're proposing?
So, as all, I, some of you may know, or all of you, uh, with Conservation District and Denrec, we're required to model the pre, post-existing, or existing proposed conditions with the post-conditions having to meet or exceed pre-conditions. So if those pines, I'll just, for instance, uh, there's ten cubic feet of, of water going towards the pines. When we design this entire site, we have to be better than that. So we have to be in nine-something C F S. So we have to improve the conditions out there, um, or we won't get approval to build it. So, um, the, there are a couple of ditches on-site that he was referring to. Some of them will be filled in, but, um, obviously the water will be relocated to other areas, um, to either infiltration or wet stormwater facilities.
Other areas on your, on your site?
Other areas on our site, not off. So, and when we do the overall plan, there's analysis points of where the water leaves the site. And it could be on this site, there could be four, five, six different areas. And all of those are modeled for the two, the ten and the hundred-year storm events. And in all three events, we have to have less flow going to those analysis points for post-conditions that what currently are today.
All right, sir. Thank you. Okay. Anybody on this side? Take one from this side. Nobody over there? Well, there's one right there. Man, come on up.
Um, my name is Barbara Street. And my husband and I live east of the Raleigh Development. We've been there thirty years. Um, it was country. Del Dot didn't have to come and widen the road because it was just a country road. And I was actually happy not to see them make a big improvement. Six-hundred-and-forty-six homes. That's a lot. And I think it's a lot, a lot compared to, um, Pine Lake and Avalon, where the homes have a lot more space and they have trees around them. When they put in the power lines, our, our property's like right next to them. And my brother and my, his wife both have cancer and their homes were about as far from the power lines as our home is now. I'm not saying their cancer came from that, but when I saw the power lines, that's what I thought of. Um, um, I wanna say that, um, they, um, we knew Mr. Raleigh. Um, he seemed like a pretty nice gentleman. And we know that he's passed away. And anyway, they did some tree work between the Raleigh Farm and our place. And they used a scarecrow fire, I believe it's called. Let me tell you, that thing screeched and yelled and it was a horrible sound. And, um, my husband believed that some of our trees were taken out as they were clearing some of that line out. Um, I, I didn't have quite as fancy words to say as everybody else did. I would like to thank you for the privilege of being able to come before you and to be able to speak, but not, not every place will allow you to do that. Thank you so much.
You certainly will. Okay, back over here. Yes, ma'am. You, right up front.
Uh, my name's Tanya Buell and I live on Lawson Road. My property butts right up against the farm, so it really does affect us. Um, the traffic is horrible now. They fly up and down our roads and it doesn't even have all those new houses all open yet. Um, I have grandchildren that live with me that catch the bus in front of my house. And it's terrifying for them to stand out there even because the way they fly. Um, they wanted to say something too because they're really upset that the farm is gonna be destroyed. Um, we walk our dogs there. They like the water that's down there at all. So it's, it's hard and just the thought of that, much more traffic. We go to the local church on the corner of Zoor Road and we walk there. And even to do that anymore is, it's, it's risky. So it's, it is scary. It's really scary, you know, having the thought of all those houses taking over.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Yes, sir. You're fine.
My name's Paul Leon. I live on Avalon Road. I'm concerned about how far up Avalon Road will be widened for access into this subdivision. Uh, what's the procedure about going about widening it? And will the people who live where this widening will be, will they lose their property in order for the widening of it?
Be quiet. Good question. We'll find out.
My last question is, Avalon Road is filled with tax ditches, and they're essential, because we need them. Will they be rerouting them, or will they? I'm just concerned that the loss of tax ditches is gonna make the flooding even worse.
We'll find out. I can tell you that they can't fill them in. If they're, if they are public, if they're public ditches, public tax, tax ditches, they either have to remain, or some other conveyance would have to be put in in their place. But I'll let them address that for you.
So, if I'm gonna lose part of my property to a road widening, am I gonna lose more property for a rerouting of a tax ditch?
We'll find out. There's probably sufficient right-of-way there, but we'll ask the question.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Mr. Sackler, tell us about the right-of-way and what the situation is there on Avalon.
So, I'm not familiar with the right-of-way that he's referring to with the tax ditch, but typically, most tax ditches in Sussex, Kent County, and Delaware, most of them have anywhere from about a fifty to a hundred and twenty-foot right-of-way already. I'm with them, so, but I don't foresee anything being realigned as far as swells, not on this property.
Right. And how about the, is the entrance, or is the right-of-way for Avalon Road sufficient to do the improvements that Del Dot is imposing on you without having to get additional right-of-way from the residents? Do you know the answer to that?
The answer, the current right-of-way is not sufficient. However, the Raleigh property will be donating or transforming a right-of-way to Del Dot. And most, probably, where their road is on Avalon, the edge of pavement will remain the same, and most of the improvements will be shifted towards the subdivision to not impact the neighbors. That's not to say some may not be affected with the ultimate design. You never know with pipes or whatever, there may, there may need to be some things that happen on their property, but we, we try our best not to. And I don't foresee with looking at Avalon already, why all the improvements cannot be...
I don't think you can without their permission.
That's correct. No, so, that's what I'm saying. So, I don't see Avalon Road with looking at it preliminary with Del Dot. Most of those improvements will be shifted, or all of them, towards the subdivision where the additional right-of-way is granted.
What you're saying is that the plan is that if additional property is required, it's gonna come from your side of the road and not, not the other.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just to clarify, yeah, just to clarify that, so nobody is in here thinking there's gonna be some sort of a taking. The only way we could ever use somebody's property for a Del Dot right-of-way is to get their consent and permission to do so.
And pay them for it.
And pay them for it, correct. So, if, essentially, what'll happen is if the right-of-way is not sufficient, we try to pull everything onto our side of the property. If we can't do that, we go to the neighbors, and then we try to buy whatever piece of land we need. And then if we can't do that, then oftentimes, we'll have to go back to Del Dot to try to get some sort of design deviation or figure it out.
All right, okay. Back on this side. Anybody over here? All the way in the back, pink shirt, come on up. And we'll be, we'll be with y'all here in a second.
My name's Matt Dickens. I own the property on Avalon, on the north side of Avalon, directly across from the proposed development. Most of my concerns have largely already been covered, so I'm not gonna go over those again.
Thanks.
But I, but I do have some questions, I guess, on, and you probably can't quite answer this, on the Del Dot side of things. Jamie already touched on a couple of things, and maybe when I get done, he can kinda come up and go over them in case I've missed it. But it's my understanding that they're only gonna pave up until Zor, excuse me, up until Avalon from, from Zor.
We'll find out. We'll go.
Well, yeah. Long story short, if they don't pave, repave all of Avalon and Lawson, it's a huge mistake. You can barely pass another car without running off the side of the road. And so, based on their numbers, we would probably have two thousand movements a day on Avalon. If you split it between what's already being used there, which is like five or six hundred movements a day, you split their numbers, we're at two. I think Route Thirty is around four thousand movements a day. So, you're talking half of the traffic on Thirty across Avalon and Lawson, assuming fifty percent usage of that entrance. I mean, it's, it just doesn't work.
Have you considered contacting your state representative and having a discussion with them about that situation?
Well, I appreciate that advice. This is all new to me, so I'll take you.
Well, that might be something you wanna do with this, you know, with something like this pending, of course, it hadn't been approved yet, so it's hardly pending, but, you know, that, that's, I get that. I hear what you're saying. They're gonna improve, they're, they're gonna be required to improve the area that's adjacent to their property. What happens to the rest of it?
Exactly.
And maybe a coordinated effort could be had, you know, so. All right, I'll get, get Mr. Sackler to come up and talk, talk about the, your Del Dot concern.
So, yes, so we hit on that already, but, yeah. Part of the TIS and the improvements are just to upgrade the frontage roads of Avalon, Lawson, and Zor, just along our frontage. And then as well as the offsite improvement, the intersection of Zor, Holly Mount, and Hollyville, or Harmon Hills, I'm sorry. So, those are the improvements outlined in the TIS. But, yeah, upgrading all, the entirety of Avalon is very costly, and that would be something we have to get Del Dot, et cetera, involved in. But that's not part of our requirements per our TIS that was conducted.
All right, thanks. Back over here. Right up front.
My name is Mary Jo Johns, and I live on Simpler Branch Road. I'm about seven-tenths of a mile from where this development's going to go in. And I'm concerned about the heavy equipment that's gonna be going up and down these chip-and-tar roads. Even though my road's a chip-and-tar, and they are going to improve part of Lawson, but there is a part of Lawson Road, it's a chip-and-tar road. And, you know, all these guys got GPS now, and they're just gonna take the shortest route. So, who's gonna police these guys and make sure they're on, like, an Anderson Corners Road, or Zor Road, or Route Thirty? So, that's my biggest concern.
Okay, thank you. Someone else? All the way in the back? Yes, sir.
My name's Keith Dowdy, and I live on Snow Road, which butts up against the property line, because Zor Thirty and Snow Road, Snow Road connects to Thirty, which connects to the property in discussion. So, there's been a lot of discussion about the traffic. My question is specific to the construction period. The traffic and the construction entrances, most of the new developments look like they have separate construction entrances from where the final entrances will be. And I'd like to understand what the plan is for, for that, and for the water runoff during the construction phase.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm not sure which one of the two of you wanna respond to this, but that's a fair question about construction traffic. The other thing that I think is implied in that, and you might need your attorney friend to help you with this, is folks are interested in the duration of construction, which with six hundred and forty-six housing units, what do you think the absorption rate is, is going to be, or what is the typical absorption rate? And so, you know, because they're, the question that I think is in their mind, or at least in my mind, is, you know, how, how long will it take to build all this out? And that's one question. The other question is about where the construction, are the construction entrances gonna be different from where the permanent entrances are at this point?
So, the construction entrance would be kinda easier. Typically, the construction entrance will be where one of the main entrances is to start for the first phase, or maybe even the first two phases. But then subsequently after that, they usually try and build from the back. So, there will probably be another construction entrance later on in the development, where, I don't know yet, as we get through design, because this is prelim, hasn't really been thought out yet, but more than likely, there will be a separate construction entrance, so traffic isn't running in front of the new ones, so.
And what efforts will you be undertaking to control stormwater runoff during construction?
Well, the Conservation District in Denrick has a whole list, laundry list of items, silk fence, matting, dust control, there's concrete, poor areas, there's, pretty much everything's already included in all the details, et cetera, what they require. And there's also CCR inspectors, and the county inspectors come out weekly to check the site for that set issues, so.
Okay, all right.
If I could follow up, what, so which entrance is gonna be the main one, or the, where you're gonna start from, I guess?
I would say Lawson, yeah, in the front. Lawson, near the pond, and the amenity area is the first one.
Okay. As far as build-out, obviously with a project of this size, it's, it's a long time. You're talking a ten-plus-year project for all the homes to be constructed. I think it's, if you assume maybe fifty homes a year constructed and built, you know, you can extrapolate on that, twelve years. Probably before you get the first phase, so if you're fully approved, till you start building on the first phase, I would say would be between eight to twelve months, and then you would start homes at that point in time. So, I'd say, depending on the construction of the phases with a project this big, you're not gonna go through and do all of the site work way out in front of you and just have lots sitting there, that the cost is too high to just carry it for that long. So, there will be, you know, construction for a fairly long period of time associated with this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yes, no, you've already, no, one trip to a customer, I'm sorry. That's the rule. That's the rule, one trip. Somebody else? Anybody else? Okay, yes, sir.
My name's Larry Strauss. I'm from Pine Lake. I got a question. Where's all the wildlife supposed to go? I sit on my back porch, I see thirty, forty deer out there. And I know there's two big flocks of turkeys that use that property, one off of Lawson I see, and there's one off of Avalon that I see.
My guess is they're going in that guy's pine woods. Be my guess is where they go.
And now, are they gonna put a red light there in that Avalon and Zoro? Because you can sit there a good ten minutes, like three, four o'clock in the afternoon and try to get across.
All right, sir, thank you. Okay, who's next? Going once. Going twice. Okay. Being, no further comments. Commissioners, any further questions, comments?
Yes, sir.
Anyone?
No.
All right, then. Well, first, let me, before we close the public hearing, let me thank all of you for your extreme patience. We appreciate it. We know this is a very cumbersome way to do things, but it's the only way to do it and have the sunshine on it the way it should. We actually have a couple more public hearings, so we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn, and I'm gonna ask you, or we're gonna, we're going to do, we're gonna close the public hearing.